Okay, you want to do an invocation?
No.
You don't.
Sure. Okay, we're going to start a meeting before we actually call the meeting to order. We're going to do a short invocation. Dear God, we ask for guidance. We ask you to share your wisdom with us and help us to do the right thing for our town. Amen. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Item number one on the business is approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes that anyone would like to add before we approve that agenda? Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the agenda? All right, if there's no changes, will someone make a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, Bob Kohler.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, item number two, approval of minutes. We have a number of minutes from November 30th, December 13th, January 18th, February 15th. Has everyone had a chance to review those and do you see any changes you need to make? Okay, and can we approve these as one big item or do they have to be separate? One big item, okay.
I move that we approve the minutes as outlined by the chairman.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimous. All right, code of ordinances, 32.10 amendment, Max?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, have it up.
Okay. Little planning board. So this is an ordinance to amend the duties and responsibilities of the planning board. This was brought before town council on February 28th of this year. Town council directed a planning board to review this and to comment on this before they took made a consideration. So it is written to read, 32.10, instead of required, it's changed to define. The next change is on for purpose and objective. Instead of shell, it says may at the request of town council. And then there's a few edits. As you can see, prepare, review, maintain, monitor, periodically update and recommend to the governing board a comprehensive plan and such other plans is deemed appropriate and conduct ongoing relating research, data collection, mapping and analysis. B, facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in the planning process. D, well, now it's C. The only change was we added development regulations into that. D is changing. Advise the council concerning the implementation of plans, including but limited to review and comment on all zoning text and map amendments as required by 160D. And that was, those are the only changes. So tonight you are making a consideration to council on these amendments. Have any questions for me?
The changes that you're talking about, are these changes that the town board wanted you to make?
Yes, yes. And these are in the code of ordinances, not the zoning ordinance or anything. These are just code changes. And it's up for your review.
Okay, isn't the same type of thing also in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so both of them need to be changed?
This one, I'm not 100% sure if this is exactly what's in the planning board for council, planning board for the zoning ordinance, but I believe it's very similar. I can pull that up for you if you'd like.
Yeah, well, I think it says very similar.
Yeah.
You know, wording, because the wording comes pretty much from the statute. And so it seems like if you change one, you need to change the other. Do you agree with that, Max?
I will look into that.
Yeah, I'll look into it. We need this, this will go first before we review the rules of procedure for planning board and board of adjustments. I can't bring forward that rules of procedure change unless this goes before council. So then the, sorry, I keep talking, but the rules of procedure, the zoning ordinance and this are planned to be all ammunition.
Okay, does anyone on the planning board have a question concerning this? Okay, all right. Question?
There's a word missing in subsection D. It would say including but not limited to. Not missing.
Oh, yeah, advise the council concerning.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I guess, you know, my comment on this is this doesn't define what we do at all then.
Okay.
All right, so how does council advise us what to do?
So.
You know, because, you know, this first purpose objective, planning board may at the request of council. So how does council request the planning board to do anything at all? That's my question. Because right now they're not asking us to do anything, which means they'll have to pass another ordinance to ask us to do something. So why not do it all at one time? Find what they want us to do. Does that make sense, Max?
It makes sense.
I mean, right now, if you put may in there, what do we do at the next meeting if they approve that and say, yeah, we may ask them to do this, but when we come to the meeting, we say, okay, what did they ask us to do? And then how did they ask us?
So in A, it says to prepare, review, maintain, monitor and periodically update and recommend to the governing board. I believe that would cover it from my interpretation.
Now, I'm back to number four, okay? So in accordance to state law, the planning board may at the request of town council do all of the things below. How do they, my question?
Oh, how they?
How are they telling us that we have been requested to do anything?
I believe they would be able to just enforce this.
They would have to pass some sort of ordinance in order to ask us to do something.
I don't believe they would have to pass another ordinance. It would be more of, I believe it would be more like a verbal.
Yeah, a lot of times.
Yeah. Yeah. Because there was no other ordinance planned after this for a direction. So they would just.
And I'm not trying to be a pain in the rear end. I'm trying to understand what it means when you say, we may ask you to do this. How do you ask us to do this? Can you, can that be defined more clearly?
Tell him what happens when, what happens when they want us to do that? Say they want us to come up with another, a better comprehensive plan for the town.
It would just verbally direct.
They would just tell us, say, we want you to come up with something and we want to look at it.
Yeah, so.
That's what happened last time.
But that's not how council works. Council usually makes a motion and they vote on something. Is that correct, Max?
Well.
Well, they would.
I mean, they have to have a consensus, so.
Yeah.
I think the council will make it pretty clear on a long going basis what they're hoping the planning board will do.
Yeah, like for example, in a development agreement, there are sections that say the planning board is, the elevations will need to be passed by planning board before they get approved by staff. I believe that would be an example of a, a may and a direction for planning board from council, because they have to vote on the development agreement. Or like this ordinance, for example, they wanted planning board to recommend it and make edits or add their comments on this. So that's an example.
And I guess, can't they just make a motion to send it back to us for review?
They can, or they could not.
Not, yeah, either way. Because I've heard them like before saying, I will, I think that this needs to go back to the planning board and they would make a motion, send it back to the planning board, let them look at it one more time.
They could do that. Just because of authority to tell you.
Well, they have the authority now to tell us what to do. I'm just trying to understand what are we supposed to do and where are they going to tell us that? If it's not in an ordinance and if it's not in the development ordinance itself, where is it where it defines what we're supposed to do?
So I think if I, if I understand you correctly, you're asking, are they going to tell the planning board for every single item that they want to hear everything specific?
Absolutely. Specifically, what are we supposed to do is if you say, we may ask you to do this. So is this something that we would expect on a monthly basis, they're going to say, this month, we want you to do this, this month, we want you to do that. I mean, what is exactly they want us to do? If it's may do this, somehow they need to define that. Now, they can define it and say, from here on, we want you to do this through some sort of motion, ordinance, whatever you want to call it, is fine, but you know, the may, terminology may just kind of leaves it up in the air, in my opinion.
So what I could do is bring back this ordinance to council with a recommendation there's more clarity in the responsibilities.
Right, if you look at any other planning board responsibilities, no one has this kind of wording in there. If you look at Indian Trails, you know, remember Waxaw, I mean, they don't have that type of wording in there. They're very clear what the responsibilities are. And that's, that's all I would ask for is that we have clarity.
Okay, I can bring that to council.
I'd like some comments.
Sure.
Mr. Eady, this is largely in response to the email that you sent to council outlining your view of what the planning board's duties were. And council, several council members reacted to that and said, we don't think it's quite that expansive. And they asked me to take a look at this. So I rewrote it to do two things. One was to make it align with the wording in chapter 160D, the new language. And the second was to make it absolutely clear that the council is in policy direction of land use planning, that the planning board is an advisory board and not a decision-making board on items that council thinks is their prerogative.
I understand.
So I think the practical answer is if it shows up on your agenda, the council is expecting you to take action.
Okay.
And if y'all have an idea of something you want to do that the council hasn't sent to you, send it up to them and say, we think this would be a good idea. What do you think? And you'll get an answer.
Okay, again, I'm just looking for clarity. And that's, my email that I sent was asking for clarity of exactly what you want us to do, and that's not exactly what we got.
Well, I think this is council's answer to what they want. They want to make sure that the council stays in control of town land use policy.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions for Mac or Max? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion one way or another to either approve the request as presented, approve it with changes to further request or deny the request? Okay, no one is willing to make a motion, so I would say that there is no action by the planning board on this item.
I was going to say something, I mean, I will make a motion that we, I mean, we'll vote on it one way or another. Might as well make a motion that we accept this with the correction noted by Matt McCarthy. It says not limited to. I mean, I don't have a problem with this. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this statement, provision on code of ordinances 32 dot 10 with the following changes. And the change was, this was in section?
Four.
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 D. It was including but adding the word not limited to, is that correct? Okay. All right, so the change would be including but not limited to review and comment on all zoning text map amendments as required in the statutes. Okay, we have a motion to approve the request for the changes. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next item, number four, general rezoning of 409 Stalling Road from SFR 1 to MU 2. Matthew, you're up again.
Okay. I'll present, we do have the applicant tonight in case there's any questions for them. Okay, so this is rezoning application 22.03.01. The request is to rezone from SFR 3 to MU 2. This is a quick overview of the property. This is the location. It's just down the street here, just before you get to the vehicle service repairs on the corner of Stallings and Kennard. The current zoning is SFR 3 and the existing use is a single family detached home. Here's a quick aerial, I'm sure you're all familiar with this property since it's just down the road here. Really quick history, it's been zoned SFR 3 since 2018 when the town adopted the current zoning ordinance. Prior to that, it was zoned R 10, which is roughly equivalent to SFR 3. So it's been zoned residential for a few years. The request is simply a general rezoning from SFR 3 to the MU 2 zoning district. Some quick ordinance requirements, they would be required to have 1% of the lot area required for tree save. It's only about 200 square feet and it's required in, the tree save is in the required planting yards, which are the buffers, which are type A buffers adjacent to the SFR 3 zones, which would be on the west and north of the property. There's plenty of buffer requirement to account for that tree save, so they wouldn't be required to do any kind of additional tree save. No stormwater management is required because the property is too small and no open space is required because the property is too small. The land use plan, the comprehensive land use plan calls for this property to be a single, calls for it to be a single family neighborhood. The primary land for use for this is just single family detached, which is what it is currently. Some of the secondary land uses, you can read there, are community centers, community parks, things like that. It is in the Stallings downtown plan, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. But for consistency with the comp plan, MU 2 is inconsistent with the single family neighborhood place type. So again, you can approve this or recommend to approve this rezoning even if though it is inconsistent, you just have to make that statement with the statement of reason will sing consistency. For the Stallings small area plan, this is kind of the approximate location. The small area plan was developed without parcel lines, so it's difficult to show exactly where it is. But the uses in this approximate area are the mixed use and multifamily residential, which is consistent with the MU 2 zoning district. So the comp plan and the smaller plans are inconsistent, but they're both adopted plans for you to consider. The last slide is that staff would recommend or would like the planning board to consider rezoning this property as TC. I put a lot of reasoning up on this slide. After we sent this out, staff in reviewing the zoning district ordinance found that there was one sentence at the very end of the TC zoning district that says that TC districts have to be contiguous with other TC districts. This property is not, so you can disregard the recommendation for town center. But I would add that both TC and MU 2, they're roughly similar kind of zoning districts. So the MU 2 zoning district would still meet the town's kind of vision for a small downtown along Stallings Road. And that is the end of the presentation. So are there any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board?
So it needs to be contiguous to a TC, but does it need to be contiguous or is it contiguous to the mixed use?
It is not currently, so this is the property, oh, you can't see my mouse. Can you see this? Yes. So in the red is the property. It's bordered on the north and the west by SFR 3. There are some mixed use zoned properties down the street. And staff have, this is a little bit of an aside, but staff has often wondered why these properties, these are owned by the town, why they were zoned MU 2 instead of TC. And the reasoning might be because this is the town hall, the town hall is zoned civic. So because of that separation with TC, that might be why these are also zoned MU 2. If this property was zoned to MU 2, it would be somewhat of an island, but given the development along Stallings Road, we don't see it as being any kind of spot zoning issue.
And what is the blue? Is that all civic?
This, this next.
No, which is blue?
So this is, this is the park, which is civic. The one next door, this is the vehicle service repair district.
Oh, that's a different blue.
Yes, sorry.
Right, right.
Yeah, those are all.
It is hard to see on this map, but it is actually across the street as well. So it is separated by right of way.
What is it, what do you say, what did you say about across the street?
This is Kennard Court right here between the property and consideration. So that splits it from the.
From the vehicle service.
Yeah, the vehicle service. So it's, it's next door, but it's not considered adjacent because it is separated by that road right of way.
What's the white part, the across the street?
This is SFR 1. Yes, this is SFR 1. I believe this property right here with these three dots is the trailer park that's actually in Indian Trail, it's not in Stallings. But, but these properties along the front edge are SFR 1.
So what, what is the use that's planned on, on here? Why does it need to be reserved?
So I will let the applicant answer that question if you'd like to hear from them.
I would like to make it to a beauty shop.
A what?
A beauty shop, a little salon, more of like, we just will be like five or six of us, we will do service of hair and skincare.
You'd be just, you're not, you're not building anything.
No, I'm keeping the property as is, or what I'm just going to do, that this is my plans for it. I really don't want to use that small road on the side to prevent any blockage from the neighbors in the back with the customers and all that will be too much of a blockage cars. So I will make my entry from the middle, from the front of it and exit and make the parking around my property. That's the only thing will be changed in there, but everything in the building itself will stay the same way it is. I would not be changing anything.
All right, Matt, can you make that bigger?
I can show you some pictures in there. I already have some plans.
I just wanted to, to mark that, yeah.
There used to be one over here. There used to be a house here that recently sold that they used as a collage for years on Monroe Avenue. On the edge, I guess it was, I guess it was a metal bar on the edge.
Where's my?
But it was a salon for a long time. A house.
So this is the property in question.
Pretty much like this is small Y's road right beside it. Looking here too. Because now don't they come in, do they come in from this side now? Well, honestly, right now you can come from anywhere.
Yeah, and I've got.
And I want not to block this for the neighbors behind me and not to have traffic with the customers and the people lives behind us. So it makes it easier to be separated this way. And having the trees in there will make it just look pretty on the side and my entrance and my exit will be here. Doing minimal changes inside of it to make it more of a space.
Okay, so you have parking here and in here. Okay. You guys want to see this?
I can see it.
Oh, okay. Do we need to approve this?
No, you're just, you're disapproving the zoning category.
Yeah.
So if it was approved, then the applicant would just work with staff with the plans. You're not considering the plans, you're just considering the zoning category.
Okay, okay.
What's the biggest difference between town center and MU 2?
There are some slight, there's some slight use differences. The uses, like I said, are roughly similar. The zoning districts have different setbacks requirements. The TC district has more allowances to allow for kind of a denser developed area, whereas MU 2 is a little bit more traditional in terms of the setbacks and height restrictions.
I was just thinking if she, something happened and she sold her business or wanted to get out of the business and then somebody else bought it, what would they use it for?
Right.
No, that's a good consideration.
Can I answer this question?
Sure.
I have two boys that are planning to get into a hairdresser business because I bought this building. So I don't think it's going to be sold pretty soon, they're still 14. Actually, he's here with me because he wants to see what's going to happen.
I'll also add that the property is fairly small, it's half of an acre, so that kind of limits what could be done with the property anyways.
It's the one on the corner and it has, does it have a deck off this side of it or that side of it? I think it does, anyway. Because you can't see in that picture, but I think.
No, what you see, are you talking about what you see in the picture?
No, what you see, when you drive by it, is there, I was trying to remember what the house looked like from the outside.
It's a little orange.
Is it, is it, is it tan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit light brown.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a double door entrance?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you for showing me, yeah. That's what I, yeah, that's, I mean, I couldn't remember.
Well, that's, that would be a different concern for us, but we're just.
No, it's not our concern.
We're just looking at the rezoning. All right, David, anything? Okay, Bob?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Laurie?
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, so we're considering the request to rezone the property at 409 Stallings Road from SFR 3 to MU 2. Would someone like to make a motion either to approve the request as presented, defer the request or deny the request?
Make a motion to recommend approval of the request as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to approve the request and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nope, okay, motion carries. All right. Okay, item number five is the statement of consistency and reasonableness for the rezoning request just approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Have one all printed up right now, here we go, yep. All right, so I can read this if you'd like, and then you guys can make a motion based on what it says. Okay, so this is general rezoning of 409 Stallings Road, parcel 07126027B, as in Baker, from SFR 3 to MU 2. And whereas the town of Stallings Town Councilor, here and after referred to as the Town Council, adopted the Stallings Comprehensive Land Use Plan on November 27, 2017. And whereas Town Council finds it necessary to adopt a new land development ordinance to maintain consistency with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And whereas Town Council finds it necessary to revise the Unified Development Ordinance to comply with state law found in NCGS 160D. Whereas the Town Council finds it necessary to consider the planning board's recommendations. Therefore, the planning board hereby recommends that the proposed zoning amendment is inconsistent and reasonable. That be but reasonable.
So the, this is a, just a suggested wording by staff. The inconsistent wording there is because staff does find that the, the property is supposed to be SFR, SFN, single-family neighborhood. So the MU 2 is inconsistent, however, you find it reasonable by your, your approval vote. So the, just to explain a little bit more, the only, what, what this will mean is if council approves this, staff will go into the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and, and update the, the comp plan.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted that one word, should be inconsistent but reasonable with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted on November 27th based on goals and objectives set forth in the document of promoting quality development and consistency with all state mandated land use regulations established through NCGS 160D. The planning board recommends to approve the proposed development and stated that the planning board finds and determines that the zoning amendment is inconsistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for the following reasons. Requested zoning matches the town's vision for the Stallings Downtown Small Area Plan. Requested zoning advances the goals of the Town Council to develop a downtown core area along Stallings Road. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve that statement?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item's item number six, text amendment 22 dot 04 dot 01. Amend the Stallings Development Ordinance to match the 160D amendment to decriminalize violations except in certain circumstances. This is Max.
So just a side note on the consistency and reasonable statement. I'll make it easier for the next council meeting, so you can just vote and say if you're consistency at the same time to vote. So you don't have to read all of that. So it's the last, hopefully the last meeting you'll ever have to read the whole thing. Okay, so this is TX 22 point 04 point 01 for criminal penalties. So the governor and general assembly of the state of North Carolina signed the, this into law in September of 2021, and it amended 160D to decriminalize violations except in cer- certain circumstances. This, I put the whole amendment in there, but the main one is highlighted. No ordinance of the following types may impose criminal penalty. Any ordinance adopted under Article 19 of this chapter, Planning and Regulation of Development or its successors, Chapter 160D of the General Statutes, except for those ordinances related to unsafe buildings. Just remember the unsafe buildings is part two, because there's a ordinance amendment in there that doesn't decriminalize, and it, it just is related to unsafe buildings. And this is the whole ordinance, I'm not gonna read that whole amendment. But I will read the Stallings Development Ordinance changes. So Amendment 1, Article 5.2, is amended to add an A and a B. And now the B is saying the following changes to this ordinance are authorized and may be carried out by either the town clerk or the planning and zoning and subdivision administrator, or their designee, without processing a formal amendment. Corrections to the official zoning map to reflect updated information on property boundaries, street alignments, natural stream alignments, et cetera, shall not be considered amendments. edits to the text of this ordinance and/or the official zoning map to update a table of amendments. Add information to the legend of official zoning map, correct topographical errors, and/or correct geographical information, and/or insert notations represented, amended text, and article, section, subsection, or provision. Any questions on Amendment 1? Okay. Amendment 2, Article 16.1, dash Evans, amended to remove the second paragraph, uh, second sentence, and that is the only amendment. Is there any questions on the removed sec- sentence? Okay. Amendment 3, Article 18.3, Section H is amended to read as follows. So the whole entire paragraph was written to say violation of provision, of the provisions of this ordinance, or failure to comply with any of its requirements, including violation of conditions and safeguards establishing connection with grants of variance or special exceptions, shall constitute a violation of this ordinance. Each day such violation continues, shall be considered a separate offense. Nothing herein contained shall prevent the town of Stallings from taking such other lawful action as is necessary to prevent or remedy any violation. Any questions on this amendment? Okay. Amendment 4, Article 18.4, Section C 16, is amended to change the last sentence. Instead of a misdemeanor, it's changed to a stop of a, a violation of a stop work order constitutes a violation of this ordinance. Any questions on Amendment 4? Okay. Amendment 5, the last sentence, and, so this is Article 18.4, or Section D 5, is, the last sentence is amended to read, instead of misdemeanor, violation of this ordinance. Assuming no questions on that. Amendment 6, as we're repealing 19.34 dash 3 entirely, for, because it deals with criminal penalties. And then Amendment 7, Article 23.6 dash 5, stop work orders. There is a sentence added to say violation of a stop work order regarding any building deemed unsafe shall constitute a class one misdemeanor. So that's the only one that is allowed to be a misdemeanor because it deals with unsafe buildings. Any questions on this text amendment? Okay.
Any questions anywhere else?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so this would be text amendment 22 04 01. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the request as presented? Or deny the request?
I, I move on this amendment that we, we're supposed to be giving a recommendation to the town board.
Yeah, a recommendation for approval or denial.
I move that we recommend to the town board to approve this amendment as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and make a recommendation to approve the amendment to Town Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carried unanimously, motion passes. Okay, we have, again, the statement of reasonable consistency, again. Okay, I'm not gonna do the whereas, where for, whatever. We're gonna assume that you've heard me say
Start to approve.
I'm gonna start with the fine request, so the zoning amendment to, it's a text amendment 22 04 01. The request is to amend the Stallings Development Ordinance to align with the September 2nd, 2021 amendment to General Statute 160D, which decriminalizes violations of the zoning ordinance except in certain circumstances. Okay, and skipping all the whereas is getting down to therefore. The planning board hereby recommends that the proposed text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted on November 27th. The planning board recommends to approve the proposed amendment and stated that the planning board finds and determines that the text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for the following reasons. The proposed amendment aligns the Stallings Development Ordinance with state statute requirements. Someone make a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the statement as presented.
Second. Okay, Mr. Barnes, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, and that appears to be the end of our agenda. There is, no one has any other comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, motion to second.
Second.
Okay, all right, all in favor of adjournment? Okay, motion carries.